Good evening. Welcome to the District Three Carroll County Board of Commissioners Candidates Forum, being held at the Community Media Center of Carroll County. My name is Teresa Bethune, and I am the Vice Chair of the Community Media Center Board of Directors. This forum is being streamed live on the CMC’s website at carolmediacenter.org, as well as on Facebook and YouTube. It is also being broadcast on cable channel HD 1086. It will be available for on-demand viewing online, and will repeat regularly on our cable channels until the election. The CMC provides this programming as a public service to the community. Our goal is to establish an equal platform for political advocacy and provide local residents with information about individuals seeking public office. We encourage citizens to learn more about the candidates and take an active part in the electoral process. At this time, I will turn the program over to our moderator for the evening, Bob Blueball, the CMC’s Managing Editor for Digital Content, to explain the rules and open tonight’s forum. Bob?
And thanks to everyone who came out tonight and who’s watching us back home. As moderator, I’ll introduce the candidates for the District Three Board of County Commissioners Forum, and we’ll go over the rules for tonight, which is scheduled to last for about one hour. We thank Republican nominee Tom Gordon and Democrat nominee Zach Hands for being here tonight. Each advanced through the primary election and is seeking the first term as county commissioner. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement, and that will be followed by a question and answer session. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. They will answer identical questions. And after the candidates have answered each question, the candidate who answers first will have an opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal. At the conclusion of the Q&amp;A period, each candidate will have three minutes for a closing statement. All responses will be timed, and the candidates can clearly see the clock ticking back in the back of the room. When the time is up, they’ll be notified, and the moderator may immediately discontinue their answer at that point. So, among the questions being asked tonight are questions that were submitted in advance to the Community Media Center, as well as we’ve gotten about nine or 10 questions from the audience tonight, so that’s wonderful. We’ll get to as many of them as we possibly can. Everyone, please, this is being recorded for broadcast and going out live, so if you could be sure to turn off your cellphones and refrain from any applause or anything visible or audible to express support for anyone, we would appreciate it. So let us begin. Each candidate may now present an opening statement. We flipped a coin before we began, and Mr. Hands won and has elected to go second for his opening statement. So let’s start with an opening statement from Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I’d like to first thank the Community Media Center for hosting this forum. I’d like to also thank Mr. Hands for participating in this evening’s forum. My name is Tom Gordon. I’m the Republican Candidate Commissioner in District Three. Was born and raised here in Westminster and have lived here with my wife Kate. Professionally, I’m a local business owner and have worked in a variety of professions, including publishing, managing businesses, and overseeing millions of dollars in annual budgets. I’ve also worked with several multinational corporations. I’m a product of our community, from my early education in the public school system to graduating from McDaniel College. I’m a lifelong proponent of our community both in Westminster and our county. I have served on numerous nonprofit boards, including the Carroll County Land Trust, the Historical Society of Carroll County, the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster, and served on the Chamber of Commerce’s Legislative Committee. I believe in giving back to our community and those who live here. I’m not someone who’s looking to work my way up the political ladder. I’m here to be a public servant and to work for all in our community. The past few years have been difficult and challenging for us all. We’re now facing new challenges with record inflation and additional economic challenges locally, state, and nationally. Locally, we’re facing the challenge of paid fire and EMS, our school system funding, and increasing job opportunities to our residents. While we face these, we’re also experiencing great opportunities in our community, from additional recreational options to businesses that improve our economic base and lifestyles. Unlike many local governments in our country, our county has a strong fiscal record and robust economic development and employment growth. Our county has once again received AAA bond rating from Fitch, Moody’s, and Standard and Poor’s. This is very important, as it allows us, as a county, to utilize funding for capital projects at a low cost and reflects the sound fiscal policies and prudent planning here in Carroll. This is significant in the challenging economy and at the times when many governments in some areas are underwater. I’m running to be your county commissioner, and I will successfully navigate us as we face challenges while also discovering and capitalizing on new opportunities. I look forward to answering your questions, and I thank you for being here tonight and look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hands?
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to the Community Media Center for hosting this evening’s forum. I also want to thank everyone here listening tonight and everyone watching at home. Mr. Gordon, it’s good to be with you as well. I look forward to having a very lively conversation this evening. Over the last couple of years, I’ve had the privilege of speaking with countless residents of District Three and Carroll County, local community leaders and business owners, to fully understand the challenges and opportunities that our next Board of Commissioners will face, but also to listen to the concerns and questions that the people who live here have about the future. Our leadership in this county has looked and acted the same for a long time, and one common thing that I’ve heard, in District Three specifically, is that while people love living here, they are concerned about our inconsistent approach to growth, our inability to adapt to evolving economic and social circumstances, and the turmoil within our school system. This is why we need leaders who have clear and bold ideas, aimed at solving problems, with a fresh perspective on how to deal with the issues in front of us, and the experience in government to build relationships and secure results for the people of Carroll County. I know that our county is a great place to live, work, play, and raise a family, but we can’t be complacent about maintaining that. The same approach that we’ve had for decades isn’t going to get the job done moving forward. I have the experience at the county and the state level to help Carroll County build a successful future. Now, we’ll get into the individual issues in a little bit, but I have laid out a series of policy proposals over the course of this campaign that I think will help Carroll County move forward as a thriving part of this region, and I look forward to working across the aisle with my Republican colleagues in December to get to work on day one. I thank you again for having me, and I look forward to diving into the questions.
Thank you. Great. We will now move to the Q&amp;A portion of tonight’s forum. We’ll alternate between who goes first for each question, and the first respondent, again, will have an option of a 30-second rebuttal after the second person answers. And we’re going to start with Mr. Hands. So the first question, what do you consider to be the biggest challenges facing Carroll County, and what will you do to help Carroll County overcome those challenges?
So I think our biggest challenge is making sure that we have the infrastructure in place and are providing the necessary resources to keep our residents safe and healthy, whether that be to bolster our fire and EMS system, which has been stretched dangerously thin in recent years, whether that be ensuring our health department is equipped and prepared to once again deal with countywide health crises, or giving our local law enforcement the support they need to effectively police our communities and hire well-trained and experienced staff that are focused on the safety of the people here in Carroll County. Public safety is certainly the most important job of a county commissioner, and I think those are the most important challenges that the next Board of Commissioners will face. It’s certainly not limited to just that, though. I also think we have a pretty significant challenge as county commissioners in partnership with the Board of Education, to ensure that our school system and our educators have the resources they need to put our students on a path to success. We’ve seen the devastating impacts that two years of virtual learning had on the performance of our students, and implementing the blueprint for Maryland’s future at the county level is certainly going to be a lift, and we know that the last few years have been particularly rough for students and staff. Finally, I think we face now, more than ever, a challenge in balancing our need for economic growth and development while maintaining our identity. I look forward to having the opportunity to work through these challenges and working with my fellow commissioners and members of the community to offer concrete solutions to address them.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Well, in regards to the challenges we’re facing in our community, as Mr. Hands has also said, there’s a number of them. Some of those I will agree with them on, some not so much. One of the biggest challenges we have, and anyone that’s paid any attention in the past year especially, is the budget. It’s where all our funding comes from. How do we fund fire and EMS? How do we fund our teachers? How do we deal with the blueprint from the state that we’re getting zero funding from in Carroll County? So first and foremost, we need a balanced budget to oversee all these different areas of challenge. They’re not impossible, they’re just challenging, without question. Secondly, one of the things we need to look at within this budget is how we’re maintaining this budget. It’s nice to throw money at things and think that that’s the solution, but where are we getting this funding? We live in hard economic times, where we’re dealing with almost 9% inflation. Anybody that’s looked at their financial portfolios of late will realize they’ve nationally lost about $30,000 in many cases. Our senior citizens are being affected in that, as are our older population and even our Gen X and other folks. So we have to be very careful how we find this funding to both balance the budget and also pay for these other challenges and issues. Infrastructure-wise, we do have some areas where I think we could do some improvement, but overall, we do have most of our roads being paved and maintained. We’re also dealing with, you know, we have local transport buses, unlike some that would like to see us having, you know, buses that run to Owings Mills and back. We’ve never gone in that direction, nor do I think that would be ideal for our community. From the school standpoint, we need to have good communication with the school system. That is why one of the first things I want to do after we’re finally seated is to have quarterly meetings with the school system and have open, clear, professional dialogue to see where we can all come together as a community.
Thank you. Mr. Hands, would you like a rebuttal?
Well, I think the tax issue or the revenue issue is important as it relates to the budget, and that’s why I’ve offered in this campaign, and I hope we get into a little bit later, you know, I’d love to see a new economic development plan from the county’s Department of Economic Development. I feel like it’s been a little bit short-sighted in recent years, one that focuses on growing our tax base, so we can attract more people to live and work in Carroll County, and that we can grow how much revenue we can create from attracting more people to live here.
Thank you. Next question for Mr. Gordon first. Explain, each of you, of course, explain how you have served your District Three constituents for many years in a beneficial way prior to seeking elected office. So how have you served your constituents before now?
Well, for me, it’s always been a personal part of my life, from childbirth, being raised by my parents, my grandparents, and so forth. I was always part of the community, be it my neighbors that I got to know and learn and learn from over the years, being in scouting, becoming an Eagle Scout, giving back to the community in a variety of ways, be it church, be it other civic events, later having the opportunity to get involved. As one grows, I had the opportunity to become more involved in school, and then to go on and become involved with a variety of things in the community, be it the Historical Society, which, that is one of the wonderful things we do in this county, is maintaining our county’s history and trying to showcase and preserve that for future generations, having a board on the Carroll County Land Trust, which the land trust’s goal is to seeing a portion of our county preserved and us not becoming the next elegant city or some of the other counties around us that have had rapid expansion of growth. It’s a balancing act between those two, and we need them both, but we need to be cautious with that. Near and dear to my heart also is giving back to the community, be Boys and Girls Club. We raised $5.5 million when some folks in the county said it’s not possible. We were able to move to a wonderful location on Main Street where we’ve served a wide array of kids from all economic and socio backgrounds in the community. That is also one area where we’re branching out with satellite locations at this point. To me, it’s just been a way of life. It’s not about what I’m doing now with me running for office or anything in that sense. It’s just part of my nature. I believe in giving back and being a good steward to our fellow community members.
Thank you. Mr. Hands?
I care very deeply about this community. I’ve lived here for a really long time, and it really helped me build my skill set and my relationships to get where I was able to go through my education and professionally. And I hope to now use that experience that I’ve had, you know, whether it was at my time with the county associations or with the State Department of Education, and to come back to, you know, the county local level where so much wonderful work is done. You know, I have been in public service my entire professional career. I plan on staying in that, and I think, you know, the skill set and the knowledge that I’ve been able to accrue will be a real help for our Board of County Commissioners, and will bring a truly different perspective that, you know, I don’t think we’ve had in a long time. So I really look forward to doing that, and I, you know, this community made me who I am, so I hope to be able to give back in the next four years as county commissioner.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
No.
Okay. This is for Mr. Hands first? I’m sorry, it’s for Mr. Gordon first. Getting confused here. What support have you received in endorsements or otherwise for your candidacy for commissioner? And again, this is for Mr. Hands first.
We should just keep flipping a coin for every question.
I like that idea.
So, I just want to start with this particular question. You know, it’s been 28 years since a Democrat was elected to public office locally here in Carroll County. I have had the privilege of meeting with just about every local group that you could have met with, to learn about what they do, to build relationships. It is unlikely that they’re going to endorse a Democrat, especially before the primary, but given the political track record of the county, I certainly didn’t expect to receive any local endorsements. You know, this race is more than just about endorsements and, you know, the fancy logos that you can put together in a pick-stitch and, you know, post. It’s about the policies. It’s about what you actually care about and what you actually support and what you would actually do as county commissioner. So, I appreciate the question, but I think this race is really more than just about endorsements, and it’s not something that I’ve ever really sought or deeply cared about, because I think it really does come back to what are your policies and what would you do as county commissioner? And we all know, going through some of these very political groups, it’s not always necessarily the case that the two go hand in hand. So, I’ve been more focused on, you know, speaking to individual people and talking to them about what we can do to make their lives better, as opposed to focusing solely on, you know, what political group endorsed me here and what political group endorsed me there.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Well, I think it does have its place, but I also do agree that, you know, where does this all start from? For me, support has come from everybody, from people I’ve known from my childhood. I had one gentleman who was in the midst of chemo treatment that came out at the primary and voted. I had no clue he was going to show. It was kind of an emotional moment to see that, but his whole point was, “I’m coming in out and I’m voting for you, because I’ve known you since you were five, and you’re the right person for this job.” So I’ve had support from very close family friends I’ve known personally for years in that sense, local business owners, it’s not uncommon to see them supporting me. I’m in there daily, weekly, whatever, eating breakfast, lunch, dinner. People know me, they know what I stand for, they know my belief system. Various people, as I walk around Westminster and the surrounding area, they’re very in tune to where I’m coming from and how I want to work for them. It’s not about me having this position for any other reason than to support the community I grew up and love and love. But in relationship to that, from the endorsement standpoint, I’m endorsed by Sheriff Jim Deweese, the Carroll County FOP Lodge 20, Carroll County Professional Firefighters, Paramedics, IAAF Local 5184, Delegate Krebs, Senator Reedy, the Carroll County Republican Central Committee, Carroll County Realtors CCEA, and Kim Klaesik. And as you’ll notice with all those, there’s a wide berth of people from the educational side to the Realtors, to everyone in between, and law enforcement and fire and EMS, which they know that I have their best interests at heart, and it was long before I even decided to run. As many people may know or may not know, one of the things I did previously for several years was I was a freelance writer in the Carroll County Times, and I wrote about these topics long before and even after I had run previously. So this is not something where it’s just a case of running for political sake or endorsement for political sake. They know me, they trust me, and they believe in me.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
You know, and I didn’t, there’s a significant number of business owners in the community and especially educators that have expressed their support for me throughout this campaign. The Board of Ed Race and the endorsements that came from CCEA were particularly contentious before the primary. So, you know, I think, you know, I feel the support from educators in our community, so I think it’s important to mention that, you know, a lot of people locally have expressed their support, both visually and, you know, individually and privately to me.
Thank you. And this time, we’ll start with Mr. Gordon. What is your vision or strategy for economic development in Carroll County?
Well, economic development in Carroll County is one that we’ve run pretty traditionally for some time. There are components and parts of that that I think serve a purpose, and there’s some areas that I think we definitely can improve on. One area I’d like to see us improve on that, which many people are aware of from the past 20 years, was Carroll County had various visitors over the years, including Charlton Heston, Julia Roberts, and the reason I name these individuals is we were more involved in the Maryland film industry than we’ve been in a long time. And the thing about that industry is that brings in jobs, and yes, they’re not full-time consistent jobs, but if we bring in those types of individuals in those kind of industries, it brings in, one, tourism, which we need to focus heavily on tourism, and film ties into tourism, but also in relation to that, we need to be looking at our county as a whole when it comes to tourism, because you have areas like Reading, Pennsylvania, where they’ll have major historical events and tourism events. Carroll County, we don’t seem to grasp the rich history we have, be it our early history, be it our relationship to the direction from Gettysburg, Baltimore City, and so forth. So we really need to be focusing on tourism. But the other thing about economic development that I think some people get confused on is we actually do a lot more economic development than anyone realizes, just because it’s not a new business opening up on Main Street, or it’s the fast food restaurant on 140 that we all see and go, “Wow, we’ve got another mattress store.” Don’t be confused. We have major companies moving in here consistently. I hope to touch on this a little later, but some of these companies are major aerodynamics companies. We have major companies in the defense industry, and we’re seeing a lot of these companies not only move in, they’re hiring our local residents because they know we’re a good place to both manufacture and include our populace in those positions. And many of these companies are not just moving in here, they’ve also expanded and will continue to expand, including, for example, one local business, which is Hans, which is moving to a large expansion in Hampstead very soon.
Thank you. Mr. Hands?
You know, this is an area where I think we have an opportunity to improve, and, you know, we have had, we do have some great businesses here, and we have had a lot coming in, too, but I’ve heard plenty of times that the process for establishing a business in Carroll County hasn’t been smooth, and I certainly think, working alongside our municipalities, that we can do a much better job of making that process more effective. Over the last decade, you know, we’ve certainly made some strides, I think, in modernizing how we view development, but the fact is, from a population perspective, purely population, we’ve been the slowest-growing county in this region over the last 10 years, and I think we could do a much better job of marketing Carroll County as a great place to live or to start your business. So I think what we lack is a real vision for smart growth and development. You know, I offered, like I did at the beginning, that I’d like to see a new economic development plan presented by our economic development team that’s not just focused on the retention of the businesses we already have, which is very important, but that is proactive, that is focused on attracting new and innovative businesses here, and that also looks at the types of modern development that can make Carroll County attractive to younger generations, whether that’s redirecting some focus onto recreation and entertainment or employing more mixed-use development. In my view, we have also dropped the ball by not capitalizing on the new work environment that we have in the post-COVID world, where a lot more people are working hybrid, you know, a couple days in the office, a couple days here. I’ve heard a consistent complaint over the years of people who aren’t willing to make the commute from Carroll County to Baltimore or DC. We have a real opportunity, I think, with the new work environment to attract those people here, so there needs to be a better marketing strategy. We have a lot of great businesses here, and we need to continue to do everything we can to make sure they’re supported. We have unique things to offer, as Mr. Gordon mentioned, and I think if we sharpen our objectives and target our infrastructure investments, while we support what we do already, our county will be on the path to success.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Yes. In reference to economic development in our county, we’ve been very fortunate the last three years in that the Maryland Department of Commerce has invested $4.8 million into Carroll County. They’re doing that because we’re on the right path. Also, when you look at the bond rating we recently had, those three institutions are not just handing out AAA ratings to anyone just because they’re looking at us for the significance we’re doing. In reference to smart growth, Carroll County has never been a fan of that, and in many ways, there’s a lot of challenges with that. And on the entertainment side, we have the Panther Complex coming out to Hampstead soon.
Thank you. Let’s get to a couple of the questions that were brought in by members of our studio audience. So this time, we’re going to start with Mr. Hands. Is it more important to you to represent your district or to side with other members of the commission?
Well, I think that depends on the issue. I’m going to always do what I think is in the best interest of the residents of District Three, but also for all of Carroll County. You know, we are elected to, by specific, the 26,000 voters here in District Three, but, you know, you represent the entire county, you make a decision as a group of five people, so I’m always going to do what I think is in the best interest of all the people in Carroll County, and I’m always going to, you know, solicit feedback from the people that I specifically represent in District Three to help inform that decision. So I don’t think it’s one or the other necessarily. I think you need to gather all of the feedback you can, both from your constituents and in the community, stakeholders in the community, to come to your best decision, and, you know, I’m not beholden to anybody if I’m elected to office here, so I think I’m going to make the decision, every decision, based off of the facts that I have in front of me and, you know, what I think will be the best for our county moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure, sure. From our studio audience, is it more important to you to represent your district or to side with other members of the commission?
Well, I don’t really see it as siding with members of the commission. Yes, we’re elected by the population and the public in District Three, but the one thing we have, the way our county is set up, is we are a county commissioner, not a district commissioner. Yes, we represent District Three, but we also represent the entire county. Over the past few years, there’s been some challenges, and I know some folks personally that have come to me over the years with frustration. They live in a district, they reach out to a commissioner, another commissioner says, “Hey, give me a call,” and they’re told, “Wait, that’s not your commissioner. You need to talk to X in this district.” I personally understand wanting to speak to a person specifically in your district, but I think as a county commissioner, you need to talk to anyone. My policy and belief has always been, regardless of being a District Three commissioner, county commissioner, but the title is county, my door is open to anyone. So if I had someone from District One that came to me and had a problem, and as we know, we’ll have Commissioner Vigliotti in District One, if Commissioner Vigliotti and I could sit down with that member of the community and try to work with that together, because our strength as a community is not just limiting ourselves to just our district, it’s working and wrapping ourselves hopefully around everyone. So from that standpoint, I would have to say I would want to look out for the entire community and the entire county. I’m aware of who represents and who elected me, but my sole focus and goal would be to work for all of the county.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Again, from our audience, how will you handle divergences of political opinion? Obviously, we’re a politically-charged country, and there’s liable to be some divergences of political opinion once one of you is on the board. How will you, the question is for you first, Mr. Gordon.
Okay, just checking, I wasn’t sure you were looking at both.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that’s fine. In reference to political divergence, we all live here. We all have different opinions, different backgrounds, different jobs. Our differences in many ways are what make us great. I personally happen to like having conversations with people of different ideas, be it political or otherwise, because I want to know why people think the way they do, and I want to understand them better. I’m not somebody, and we’ve seen this in the past, too much on the federal, the state, even national, definitely local, I’m not interested in people fighting with each other. I think people need to get back to that period of having respect and being able to have an honest conversation. We don’t always have to agree, but we need to be looking out for the priorities, which the priority here is the county we all live and love and live in, but we also need to look out for each other. We’re not living in individual bubbles, we’re all part of this one group, and we all live in Carroll County as residents. So to me, it’s, I’m more than happy to sit down with anyone at any time. I’ve done so a variety of times over the years, both personally, professionally, and even during this campaign, to listen to other people’s opinions, because it’s important to me personally to know where everyone stands and to be able to have those open conversations, because that is how we accomplish things together collectively, not trying to force one opinion over another. We have to sit down and work together for the common good of this community and this county, more so now than ever, given the economic challenges and all the other issues we’re dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hands?
Yeah, and I agree with a lot of what Mr. Gordon said, and, you know, so many of the issues that we will have to deal with as county commissioners, in my view, are not partisan. You know, whether it be something like the opioid crisis or making sure that, you know, we have the emergency services in place to be able to respond to life and death situations, you know, those are not inherently political things for me, and, you know, four of the commissioner races are already decided. We will have four Republicans on the Board of County Commissioners. So I look forward to working with my Republican colleagues in December to get to work, and, you know, I will And, you know, I will have to work across party lines to get things done. And, you know, I'm a Democrat who lives in Carroll County. I've certainly spent a lot of time sitting down and talking to people of all political affiliations. And I do think, and I agree with Mr. Gordon, you know, sometimes we need, if we sit down and we have conversations with people about real issues, and you get behind some of the R and D stuff, you can really come to an agreement on a lot of things. And I look forward to bringing that approach to the Board of Commissioners. You know, I consider myself to be a moderate politically, so I hope to leverage that as well to be an effective arbiter of important decisions on the Board of County Commissioners, and looking forward to working with anybody to get the important work at this county done.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
No.
Okay, thanks. All right. We'll start with Mr. Hens this time. Do you have any conflicts of interest, or potential perceived conflicts of interest that could become an issue as a member of the Board of Commissioners? And how would you address such a conflict?
No. And for the last four years, from 2018 until late 2021, I had the privilege of working at the state level. I moved to be contractual at the state level after that. You can't hold state positions while you're county commissioner. So my job would solely be as a county commissioner. I'm not on anything else that I'm aware of that would be a perceived or otherwise conflict of interest, so, no.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
The answer would be no. I have no perceived or any other conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
No.
Super. Moving on. The Carroll County Public Schools makes up a huge chunk of the county budget. How would you rate the performance of the Board of Education over the last couple of years? And how do you build a relationship with the next Board of Education as a county commissioner? And this time, we're going to start with Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. First and foremost, one of the things I want to do in regards to the Board of County Commissioners and our Board of Education is to get past the drama, past the nonsense, and get down to honest communication and discussions for the public. We were all elected by the public to do work for the public. We're not there to have infighting between the boards, which we've seen many, many times over the countless years, at times on a variety of things, including the budget. There's a lack of communication at times. I want to see quarterly meetings, I've already addressed this with a few folks, I would love to see quarterly meetings between the two boards, being completely professional and direct, and having the honest, frank conversations we need to have. Those are conversations that's going to steer us forward to accomplishing the difficult feat of funding education, looking at blueprint, and the other issues. But the other thing I think we also need to be looking at is, in those conversations with the Board of Education, is the county does, we are the funding agent, so to speak, for the Board of Ed. We do not tell them how to spend their money. Once the money is passed from the county to them, that is up to them to make those decisions. I would also really hope, if possible, to see some better scenarios as to the county at this current time, during our budgeting process, the Board of Education comes in, asks for their funding, and then after that, they have their negotiations with the educators. I'm not sure if there's any state laws that would prohibit this, but it seems a little out of step to me, and I've had friends that are good educators complaining about this, that after they've been funded, then they're negotiating. And to me, I think if we're going to do the job honestly, properly, and correctly for the kids, for the community, and definitely our educators, we need to all put things on the table and have frank discussions, and look out for those interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hens?
I think we know that since COVID so significantly impacted all of our lives in 2020, that there were few areas hit as hard as our schools. And almost two years of virtual learning and hybrid learning and stressful circumstances certainly took a toll on our students and our staff. And now, we need our county commissioners and our Board of Education in partnership to focus on getting and keeping our students on track. And Carroll County has historically been one of the highest-performing school systems in the state, and that's where our focus should be. The numbers, in terms of performance on testing and otherwise in the last two years, we haven't seen that from the state yet, but they're certainly going to be concerning, the little bit that we know. I have been concerned that our local leaders have lost focus on this issue, and that our countywide dialogue about education has not been about our kids, but has almost entirely been about adults, ones often with political agendas. And we need to send a clear message to our, to parents and students and educators, that our schools are safe and welcoming places for all students. You know, the last few years have obviously been a challenge for everyone. But to be honest with you, I have been disappointed in the performance of our Board of Education. I think they have lost focus on student success and creating the atmosphere that is welcoming for families and students of all kinds in Carroll County. You know, I will do everything that I can to work with whoever is serving on our next Board of Education. I do strongly support the three educators running for the Board of Education right now, who have over 100 years of experience, between the three of them, Pat Dorsey, Tom Scanlon, and Amanda Jostkowski, to serve as qualified and much-needed members of our board. I think that is a particularly important race to know who we, as county commissioners, would support and want to work with next year and moving forward. It's arguably a pretty important one in the county.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
No.
Okay, thanks. Moving on, this question will be for Mr. Hens. The county is more than three-quarters of its way toward its goal of 100,000 acres of preserved agriculture land. With four new commissioners taking over, should the commitment to Ag-Prez continue, or should a new board consider moving in a new direction, perhaps to bolster growth?
Agriculture is our number-one industry in Carroll County, and we're number-one in the state in a lot of categories related to agribusiness. We're also number-one in the number of acres that we have been able to move into permanent agricultural preservation, nearly 80,000 at this point, which is four-fifths of the way towards our 100,000-acre goal. I think that remains an effective and laudable goal for the county. I don't have any interest in going beyond that at this point, because I do think we need to balance our investment in economic growth and agricultural preservation. Most of District Three, for example, is within a growth area, and I think we need to make sure, within this context, we aren't forgetting that. That being said, there are a lot of economic opportunities within agriculture. It's a huge generator of revenue for our local economy with tourism and the volume of production that we've had from our nearly 1,200 farms. I think as long as we continue to see those kinds of returns on the $200 million-plus investment that this county has made into contributing to the preservation of land here, that we can continue to move towards that 100,000-acre goal. But I don't necessarily, at this point, have any desire to go beyond that, and I do think we need to make sure we're balancing our investment.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
I support the goal. It's something that's also personal to me. I was very fortunate to put our family farm that my grandparents bought in 1948 into Ag-Prez. Ag-Prez, first and foremost, there's less than 300,000 acres, give or take, in this county. So we're never going to see the entire county developed. Secondly, the majority of Ag in the county is going to be in the more northern portion of the county, as we have growth areas in District Five. Relating to us locally, though, specifically, we're number-one in Maryland, we're number-two in the United States. For every dollar invested in Ag-Prez, we're looking at $1.80 to $2.00 in economic benefit for our community. There's roughly, there's currently 723 properties in Ag-Prez, 77,487 acres. This gives us the opportunity to have additional open space, so we don't turn into some of these other areas that have become paved communities, and we get to keep some of our rural legacy, but also get to enjoy that open area that we have. Our Ag-Prez was established in 1979. It is not only just one of our local, one of our largest local economic drivers, but it also is large within the state as well. But very importantly, from the environmental standpoint, it improves our soil and water conservation. It also helps us in assistance with agritourism. Carroll County has, to my knowledge, currently only one hydroponic greenhouse. I would love to see maybe some additional agritourism ventures in the future. And yes, Carroll County has invested in Ag-Prez. We've definitely put in money that has extinguished in permanent perpetuity all of those acreages. None of them can ever be removed, which is sometimes a misunderstanding. But the owners that have owned and/or owned those properties made that investment not only for the future of Carroll County, but many generations to come.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Yeah, you know, we're certainly not in danger of becoming one of the paved communities that Mr. Gordon referenced, like any of our neighbors. 50% of our landmass is already in agricultural use. So I think we need to, you know, continue to strive towards meeting that goal, but, you know, refocus particularly, you know, in areas like Westminster, and in the southern part of our county, which are both growing parts of Carroll, to really focus on how we can invest in economic development in those areas. So, you know, I don't think we're in danger of becoming Montgomery County anytime soon.
Thank you. This will be for Mr. Gordon first. I believe the county's operating budget shows a shortfall in each of the next five years, five fiscal years, going to about more than 20 million in FY '28. Are you concerned about the ongoing, where the ongoing funding will come from, particularly considering the 250 or so-member Fire and Emergency Services Department? And do you foresee the possibility of needing to raise fees or tax rates in the next four years?
Well, it's definitely a concern, and it's a concern even further than that topic. It's a concern with us with the Blue Parent for Education, that we're going to be funding fully, since the state is not going to be giving us any funds for that. In reference to Fire and EMS, it's definitely a challenge, it's definitely a concern. We're putting that online, just like we did the County Sheriff's Department a few years ago. It's an area that's going to be a heavy lift. It's an area in which we have to compete for those 265 jobs roughly, with 1,000 openings regionally. So we're going to be competing not only with our neighbors in Frederick, we may be competing with neighbors in Delaware. And I think one of the things we have to be very, very cautious in doing this is how do we find those funds? You know, everybody's easy, quick solution is taxes and fees. Well, we live in some fun and economic times that I'm sure everyone would love to have their wallets squeezed even harder than they have been, due to the downturn, inflation, and all the other lovely economics we're dealing with at this time. I will say, though, I do believe there's light at the end of the tunnel. We're not going to get there by just raising taxes and fees, and I'm not in favor of raising taxes and fees. One of the things we need to do is we need to sit down, like any good business or family does, and look at our county budget, look at our county operations, and try to see where we can be more fiscally responsible and locate funds. And I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt that the availability of some of that money to help complete that task is there. And there are other ways in which we can grow economically as a county in a proper, balanced manner to facilitate bringing that online in a skilled, proper manner, one of which was, we had the opportunity this past year to bring in grant funding to start hiring some of these Fire and EMS. And unfortunately, we opted out of that. We would have had roughly two to three years of grant money to help fund some of those personnel, and then we would then pick up the cost after. And for some reason beyond my understanding, we chose to ignore that. We need to be looking for grants, we need to be looking for funding, and we need to do it fiscally responsibly.
Thank you. Mr. Hens?
So, I mean, it's not a secret that, you know, our Fire and EMS infrastructure in Carroll County is not inadequate, you know, it is not adequate. And that's why all of the parties that are invested in our emergency services have been focused over these last years on addressing the key problems moving forward, specifically this one that you've just asked. And, you know, the county has developed a plan to deal with some of these things that centralizes a lot of the operations and hiring of folks within Fire and EMS, under a Department of Fire and EMS at the county level. Commissioners are going to need to be very important partners in implementing that in the next several years. I think, as a county, we're going to be putting out the notices for those positions, so that hopefully we can start hiring folks soon. But funding is clearly a concern. You know, my impulse is not to go right towards raising fees or raising taxes, but to, as Mr. Gordon mentioned, look at how we can repurpose funds within the existing budget to see how we can cover these areas. But, you know, there are some other things I think that we can do as commissioners, in my mind, to help us attract first responders to live and work here. Competition with neighboring jurisdictions is going to be a big challenge, given our fiscal constraints. So I think we need to be creative and offer some different solutions. One proposal that I've offered would be, you know, establishing a live-where-you-work program, so that, you know, somebody who commits to working two, three years in the county, you may help with the closing costs on their house, or a portion of their down payment on their house. It's a smaller investment that would be limited to a pilot program, but I think it's an example of one step that we could take to show that our county is serious about making our system competitive in the region. It's one that some of our neighboring jurisdictions have already offered, and show that we're serious about recruiting people to work here and live here. And that's a program that I think could help. Certainly not, you know, a fail-safe program, but I think is an idea that could move in the right direction.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
I do find the idea to assist and fund our paid fire with closing costs or purchase costs for a house fascinating. What concerns me with that idea, and I do think it's creative, and I give kudos to its creativity, is I'm not sure I want to give out 10,000, 15,000 or more, nor do our taxpayers, to individuals that are going to buy a house and live here two to three years. I think that's a huge capital investment that we need to be careful. We're doing, we're already doing a massive, heavy lift, having to restructure and look for the finances to hire 265 people, and I don't really think that makes any sense.
Thank you. This question will be for Mr. Hens first. Obviously, District Three encompasses Westminster. Being the commissioner who represents the city, how do you plan on working with the city council, and most particularly regarding communication and working on future projects?
So I'm thankful to have good relationships with the current leadership within the city council and with the mayor. I think having consistent communication, going to their meetings, inviting them to join our commissioner meetings, and really extending that offer to all of our municipalities, because they're drivers of growth and tourism in so many ways, that we need to make sure that we have an open dialogue with them. Westminster is our county seat. It is a center of growth, it is a draw to people, for people to Carroll County. There needs to be a strong partnership. The economic development plan that I've mentioned already, I think there needs to be a municipality-specific provision within that about building good relationships and keeping that open line of dialogue. There are some specific things I think we could aid the city of Westminster on, whether that's being more cooperative on the issue of affordable housing, which is a major barrier to young people especially, who want to set up in Carroll County long-term. Having a smooth process and being communicative about business development and setting up businesses, and the process that I've heard can be very difficult. So I think I have a good relationship with our city as it is. I hope to continue to build on that, as they are a very important part of our county.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
I have an excellent relationship with all of the city council members, as well as the mayor currently, and I know quite a few of the previous ones. And it's not uncommon for us to either call each other and talk about local issues, just as me being a citizen and sharing my concerns, and it's very nice to have that kind of open, frank relationship. Also, within that ability, one of the things that Westminster, and I would like to see the county do, as well as the other municipalities, is start a process similar to what I've mentioned and proposed regarding the Board of Education. We need to have more consistent meetings. I'd love to have quarterly meetings with all the municipalities, because none of us are in this alone, we're all in this together. I know there's been challenges at times from various municipalities in the county, and there's been concerns raised about this side or the other side not meeting each other at the table equally. That is an area that I think is something we need to resolve and work past in relationship to what we can do together. You know, being a candidate and going out and door-knocking, be it in the city of Westminster or in the surrounding area outside of Westminster city limits, there's a variety of things that I think collectively, both as a municipal and the county government, we can get together and work on. One of the things that we seem to a lot of times forget is, we have a Main Street, and yes, we have 140, but a lot of our businesses on Main Street are not the kind of businesses you'd see on 140, be they boutique shops, restaurants. And I think we really need to work for an economic development plan between the two to have synergy, so that Main Street can be revitalized and become that hub as it once was in our community. And yes, we will still have 140 in the big-box stores, but those two can work in tandem, and it will be an excellent relationship between both parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
No.
Okay, let's stick with Westminster here. Lack of water is a problem in Westminster, and that issue sometimes intersects with the need for water at a new proposed county-owned property. How will you be able to work with the city to find timely solutions so that potentially beneficial projects are not held up? And this time, we're going to start with Mr. Gordon.
Well, part of that pertains to the process with planning and zoning. So there's some of that that, as a commissioner, we don't really have the complete ability just to step in and try to resolve that quickly. But getting back to what I said in the last question, what this comes down to is having But getting back to what I said in the last question, what this comes down to is having good transparency and good communications between Westminster and the county as a whole. One of the things Westminster is in the process of doing, and I think it's probably going to be online maybe within the next few months or early next year, is we're looking at a water reuse process. That's been something that the city's been working on and investing in for some time. It's not a complete solution, but it definitely gets us further to where we need be relating to water. Sadly, Westminster's not special or unique in that water issue. Our county as a whole deals with that situation since we decided to, many years ago, probably in the 1950s, we sold off one of our biggest water masses down, the one reservoir down below Finksburg. We sold that to Baltimore City, and we actually pay Baltimore City for our water from that mass, water mass now. But getting back to it, there are other areas that Westminster and the county are looking at to develop possible future water opportunities. None of them have come online yet, but I think the bottom line is we have to have an open, clear communication. I think water reuse will be of assistance to get us further along. And the other thing is we have to have a good, good working relationship with MDE. I know there's been some challenges between the county and the municipality in the past. And again, it's all back to us working together for that commonality of the community and the people that live here, and trying to make and working to make our community the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hands.
Well, I agree with a lot of what Tom said. You know, access to water sources has always been a significant problem in Carroll County and, you know, specifically here in Westminster. I think we need to continue to look for innovative ideas, towards innovative ideas and methods to address this need across the county. As he mentioned, there has been some progress made on this issue, and I think the county commissioners can be good partners with the city of Westminster and our other municipalities as well. Our commissioners gave the city of Westminster $1.5 million towards that pure water reuse program, which will help businesses and developers within District Three to move forward, hopefully in the next few years, I think by 2025, to start with projects in the near future so that they have access to water. It's often been the biggest barrier to growth in places across Carroll County, so investing in programs like the one in Westminster, I think, is crucial to addressing that need. I think keeping an open dialogue with MDE is obviously very important. Looking to some of our neighbors, and because this is obviously not a Carroll County-specific or unique issue, see what they've been doing. See if we can adopt some of the innovative ideas that they've had. But I think, you know, we've taken a good step in the right direction with the reuse program within the city of Westminster.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
No.
Okay. We're starting to run a little short on time. Let's get back to a couple more questions from our audience. And this time, we'll start with Mr. Hands. So, do you have a response to McDaniel College's five-year plan recently announced, specifically the goal to make Westminster more welcoming to students?
Well, I certainly have always, you know, I've lived right down the street for a long time, and I've always wanted to see a more robust partnership between McDaniel and the city of Westminster to really embrace the wonderful things that McDaniel College offers. I think it's, you know, it's certainly a step in the right direction. I look forward to seeing that continue to grow and expand with, you know, the city of Westminster and their partnership with McDaniel College and whatever the county commissioners, whatever I could do as county commissioner to continue to leverage that and make it more welcoming and integrate the students of the college into our communities, I think, is critically important. I've had the privilege in different professional capacities of having interns who were from McDaniel College. They're wonderful. I think looking for different pathways to get them involved is a very laudable and important goal, and I look forward to continuing to advance that.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon.
I think it's a significant move in the right direction. As somebody that graduated from McDaniel at the time Western Maryland, and having a number of family members also graduate there, you know, it's a significant piece to our, our personal history and family as well, as well as the community as a whole. I think the challenge we've kind of faced over the years, and I'm not really certain of why, I've asked this to a wide variety of people, be it former college professors, other students and such. We're a town with a college. We don't really feel like a college town. And I'm not really sure exactly if that was different in the past or why that seems to be, but I think it's definitely an area where I think both Westminster City, McDaniel College, and the county could work together for the betterment of that. I had several college interns a few years ago working with me professionally, and on the first question I asked them, I said, "Don't tell me what you think I want to hear. Tell me, where do you go in Carroll County? Where do you shop in Westminster? And tell me what you see, because I don't want to know what you think I want to hear." And, you know, they went to Boggers. Strangely enough, none of them had ever been to Huffman's. They'd been here three years and never been to Huffman's, so we immediately took a trip to Huffman's because I'm like, "You've got to go to Huffman's. How can you not have been to Huffman's in the Westminster area?" But I think the thing is, we need to sit down collectively and get back to what I've said before on a variety of topics. We need to collaborate and work together, and we need to bring in even potentially some of the student body, some of the alumni, and just the community as a whole, and have that conversation and go, "Where do we want to drive this conversation, and how can we work together for the betterment of not only the college side of it, but the community as a whole?" Thank you.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Yeah, you know, I think it's a really important point that we not operate within silos, and this is one area where that's certainly the case. You know, I've seen steps in the right direction, you know, whether it's at some of the local shops, you know, where students are able to use their bonus bucks, making sure that they're, they know what is available and accessible to them in the community, I think is a good step towards getting them more involved in the community. So, a program like that where you can go to a local business and there's a McDaniel-specific aspect to it, I think, is a really innovative step, and I hope to see that continue in the next few years.
Thank you. This will be for Mr. Gordon, also from the audience. Our young people need things to do. How would you address this?
I couldn't agree more. I mean, it's something that we've all experienced, for any of us that grew up here. We were saying it back when I was in high school here. I see it on a consistent basis with being involved with the Boys and Girls Club. I get to watch a wide, diverse group of our kids come into that place, which is a safe place for them, both educationally and also socially. I think that's one great opportunity that we were able to move that down to Main Street in Westminster. But I think one of the other things in relationship to things to do for kids in the community, I know this isn't local to Westminster, but we do have Panther Park coming out outside of Hampstead. I think we need to look at that and try to decide, you know, how do we want to approach this? Because yes, there are things to do, but they're not always the right things to do. Sometimes it's what's going to get us in trouble when we were kids or kids today. I think both working with a variety of some of the nonprofit groups in the community, reaching out to them, as well as the municipality and the county, I think we need to take a more deep dive into what we can accomplish for kids. And better yet, I think the better question to start with is, what do kids want to do? What would they like to see here? Because my perspective as a candidate or, you know, potential maybe next commissioner or someone else's or a member of the community is not going to be what they would like to see. So, I think first and foremost, we need to start by asking the question to the youth of our area, "What do you want? What would you like to see?" Give us that, and we can start with that foundation and work from there, because I don't think we serve anybody well if we just create what we think they want. We need to ask them first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hands.
Of all the things I hear on the campaign trail, this is one that I hear probably the most, and I can't think of an example of, you know, Mr. Gordon mentioned, what do the kids want to do? What they certainly do not want to do is go to a mall, you know, that was constructed a really long time ago, that is mostly empty, and I can't think of a better example of something that's, you know, kind of outdated, that is here in District Three, that we really need to work towards changing our mindset in terms of, you know, modern places to eat, to shop, to spend your time. And I think, you know, it's good to, when you're talking about kids, younger kids, absolutely, but, you know, it's, I hear from parents whose kids go off to college and they never come back. When I think about that question, it's, you know, you're in your late twenties and you, or mid twenties, early twenties, and you look at what Carroll County has to offer, and, you know, we have a lot of wonderful things to offer, but at the same time, in terms of entertainment, those things just might not be available. And that's why I want to focus on that within an economic development plan, because it's not something that I think we've really focused on that needs to be a part of the vision. It doesn't need to be the entire vision, but clearly, you know, you just look at our population growth, the demographic shifts to being a much older county. We certainly need to have that as a pillar of any plan for development and growth moving forward. So, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Gordon said, but, you know, I think we need to have a more proactive approach with it, and it can start with something like a survey where you ask what people want here, but then you need to be proactive and take actual steps to address it, and I feel like we've kind of dropped the ball on that.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
No.
Okay. We're pretty much at our end of time here, so let's wrap up the Q and A with one last question. I'd just like to ask each of you to discuss an issue that's important to you that we haven't touched on tonight or haven't touched much on tonight, that you feel passionate about and you'd like to talk about. So, if we could, let's start with Mr. Hands.
Yes, so, this particular issue ties into so many of the other things that we've talked tonight, talked about tonight, and that's reliable access to broadband in some rural areas of the county and, you know, even in some of the southern parts of the county. It's definitely been a barrier to attracting people to move here in terms of having reliable, consistent broadband that works. We still have about 4,500 households in this county without access to broadband. It can be quite expensive to branch out to folks who don't have it. Not everybody might want it either, but most people do. The commissioners recently put $10 million towards expanding broadband access to some of those households. I think we can continue to look for funding to make sure that we can get broadband out to all of those homes. There is an Office of Rural Broadband at the state level that we should continue to try and access grant funding from so that we can bring that number down even further and make sure that access to the internet and to broadband is not something that would keep someone from wanting to live here, and that's threaded in so many of the issues that we've talked about tonight, whether it be schools, businesses, or even just where you want to set up your home. I think expansion in this area is also a good candidate for the use of some of the one-time federal funds that we have because it's an investment in the infrastructure of our county. So, we didn't really touch on that tonight, but I think that's a really important thing that we, the county commissioner should focus on moving forward, and I certainly will be talking about if I am elected.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Well, ironically, I'm going to mention that one as well. It is a very significant issue. I have a good friend of, I was just visiting recently, and he was complaining how Comcast is 300 feet from his place of business. When it comes to addressing the access to rural broadband, it's a huge challenge, but, you know, part of, it's a nationwide challenge in spite of mapping improvements in the amount of gap areas. It's a real issue in our county with its rural nature. Residents, you know, with driveways greater than 400 feet generally have to pay a significant cost to bring it to the service to their home or business. The cost has to take the service from the road to the house, and it's typically borne on the homeowner, the business owner. It's, and, you know, typically, it's being utilized with taxpayer funding. We need to be very detailed in understanding of what projects are currently funded that are out there and also underway, including which services may be going online in the near future. We should also be looking at identifying where gaps genuinely exist and including provider passes. We need to understand which providers are available in the area, and we'll work with, and we need to work with those providers to find solutions for those gaps. We need to be able to make sure our public can get access. We need to, we need to look at matching state and federal monies to expand these services with existing providers as a priority, focusing on where our service is not currently available. And I think, you know, if anything besides the other variety of things we learned out of COVID, we learned a lot with kids when it came to education when they didn't have access. They, you know, they might have been given a tablet by the school system or by another organization, but they had challenges doing online classes because they have no access to internet. And it's definitely something that I would like to see us take a hard look at, but also do it in a proper fashion and approach it head-on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. I think it was a very informative Q and A. We got to about 15 questions, and we really appreciate your time tonight. Each candidate may now present a closing statement of up to three minutes. We will start with Mr. Hands.
Once again, I'd like to thank Bob and the Community Media Center for hosting and moderating this evening's forum. Mr. Gordon, it's been a really nice conversation, and I've enjoyed it. It's been a privilege to have the opportunity to discuss how I hope to help lead the county into the future and some of the ideas that I think can get us there successfully. You heard two different visions for Carroll County tonight, and I think it's safe to say that while we may not always see things the same way, I certainly don't question that Tom cares deeply about Westminster and this county as a whole. But if you're looking for a fresh perspective with new and different ideas, one that is willing to challenge the long-held establishment in this county, then I hope that you would consider supporting me at the polls next week and on Election Day, November the 8th. We have a lot of work to do to help Carroll County thrive in the next decade by showing that this really is a welcoming and attractive place to live for everyone, and I believe my experience and relationships will help us meet that goal. I look forward to working across the aisle with my colleagues and others from around the county and the state to get things done for the people of District Three and the people of Carroll County. Thank you very much again for having me this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, you lost the coin flip, but you do get the last word.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank you all for coming out this evening, and I appreciate all the questions. I'd also like to thank again Bob and the Community Media Center for hosting this forum. I'd also like to thank Mr. Hands for his participation in this, as I think it was a good conversation for all. I hope you've gotten a better sense of who I am and where I stand on the issues that we face. We're headed into challenging times. Now, when I say we're headed into challenging times, I don't want you to ever misunderstand what I'm saying and suggest that we're going to keep doing it as we have. Keep doing it as we have has been kicking the can down the road for years. That hasn't worked. That's not how I operate. I would also say, if you have any questions about any of the things I've said tonight or any other thoughts, please reach out to me. My door is always open. My involvement and my service in our community's been well-documented for decades. I did not just start doing this prior to an election cycle, and regardless of this election, my community service will continue, and I will continue to serve our great county. Running has been a positive situation, and I believe in assisting both those of us here at home and also the community at large. I have the knowledge and experience to move Carroll County forward, to face the future ahead of us, both positive and the difficult, challenging times. I'm an individual who sets out to accomplish things, and I fulfill them. I'm not about just having an idea or a concept that sounds good for me. It's about accomplishing the task. I'm someone who believes in public service and believes in listening to those in our community and listening to them fully. I've spent a lifetime working to build many relationships. I'm not an old establishment insider. I've worked at these relationships, and I've built them from the ground up, be it people I've met in my childhood or people I've met in the last six months or even three years. I listen to those in the community. That's why we talk, and that's why we have these open, frank conversations and why they come to me. The best days are still ahead of us in Carroll County, and together we can accomplish this. Through leadership, commitment, and public service, I will work for District Three and all of Carroll County. I'm humbly asking for your vote and support on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you to both candidates for joining us, and thanks to everyone who watched and to those who submitted questions for the candidates. Coverage of the District Three County Commissioner Candidates Forum will be rebroadcast on